Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees held here on October 11th, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to declare a quorum, which we do have. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one and indivisible. All right. Item three is the public forum. In Maryland, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
No.
Okay. Item four is superintendent's recognitions. Could the board members please come in front of the dais? And Mrs. Parks.
Good evening. We are so glad that you are here tonight as we honor and present a very special award, which is the Friends of Temple ISD Wildcat Award. And Chief Reynolds, if you would like to come up to the front now. The Temple Police Chief Sean Reynolds and the Temple Police Department have been loyal supporters of Temple ISD. Under Chief Reynolds' tenure, TPD has transformed the concept of community service, and they have proactively partnered with the district on numerous initiatives. TPD is always ready to stand and support and jump into action to maintain the safety and the security of our staff and students when we call and even before we do sometimes. And in fact, a very concrete example, which Chief Reynolds, not many people can say this, that you beat Dr. Ott on something. But the evening of the Uvalde tragedy, you called Dr. Ott and told him that you were going to have increased police presence at all campuses for the next several days, just so that you could help reassure our staff, students, families, and community that they were safe and that they were protected. Likewise, additional TPD officers were at all campuses this year welcoming our staff, students, and families back on campus the first week of school. And early this summer, you and your team began reviewing and analyzing our safety and crisis plans and provided vital feedback on those and advice on some of our implementation strategies. And you also have studied every single one of our floor plans so that you are prepared to provide strategic support when and if needed. The partnership between the school district and Temple PD has never been stronger, and our staff, students, families, and community can rest assured that Chief Reynolds and the Temple Police Department are ready and able to do whatever it takes to protect our schools. There is truly no greater gift of sacrifice than being willing to lay down your life for a friend, and that is why Chief Reynolds and the Temple Police Department, we are, you are the very most deserving of the Friend of Temple Wildcat Award. So, thank you.
Well, first of all, this is, well, let me back up. I don't think there'd be any other partner that the school district would want to tackle safety and security with outside of Temple PD. The men and women in uniform are just extraordinary here, and it's not just about all the things that Christine read off, but it's really about their responsibility. So, thank you. So, now I'll turn it on. Do you want to go again? Do I have to? So, we're really, really fortunate. I'm really fortunate. I have the best job in the world. I get to work with dedicated public servants, and so I wanted to just briefly kind of go around the room and introduce them. So, you got Sergeant Brad Bennett, who's over in the SRO unit. Andrea Mitchell, there in the back. The shy one. Very shy. My assistant, my administrative assistant, Becky Burrows, Deputy Chief Jeff Clark, Deputy Chief Alan Testin. I've got the mayor's here. Appreciate all your support. Our legal advisor, Nanette Rodriguez. Real quickly, if you're part of CPAC, the Citizens Police Advisory Commission, would you mind standing up for us so that we can take a moment and recognize you? This is a group that I work with on monthly. They've really been drinking from a fire hose for the past year as I've just had numerous conversations about processes and why and the code of criminal procedures, and we go through monthly stats. But you've got Alan Lidle. I hope he doesn't forget his name when I was here. It is true. Brother Gary Smith, Caitlin West, Sharon Rose, Lydia Alana, and from our communications and marketing group, PR Noah, and then really, we have the best of the last. On behalf of the men and women of the Temple Police Department, we're grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll give, we'll give both, yes, both of y'all have an opportunity to take pictures, and just while they are doing so, just know that the medal, the medal tea with Wildcats was created by our students in our CTE program, so just something special to have. And then your name and the police department's name are down on our board downstairs, just right by the elevators, so that we will always remember and be able to honor you this way for being a true friend of Temple ISD.
Congratulations. Appreciate you. I want to thank the police chief's wife for joining in on the surprise. She actually surprised them, and I'm going to take a guess. You didn't tell them by his reaction. So, she did a great job of being part of the surprise. It's very hard to give one over on a police chief. He scans parking lots, he does everything natural. We were able to get her to park away, show up early, and she was part of the surprise. So, thank you. No matter what.
And we do appreciate you guys being here. If you are here for this recognition, you are welcome to leave now. If you would like to stay, you're welcome as well, but you are welcome to make your exit, and we all understand. So, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank y'all. Thanks, Mr. Gray. Good to see you. Absolutely, yes, y'all. Absolutely, absolutely. We'll, we'll see you soon, friend.
All right. Right now, item B is an annual recognition.
Dan, if you'll check the microphone again, or I can, Eric, can you double, can you, will you double check the mic for just a second? Principals, why don't you come on up and stand with our board? We have a magic button that turns it off and on for you, Dr. Ott. So, October is National Principals Month, and every year, we like to honor our campus principals. And so, principals, it's hard for us to put into words and to do a recognition that's inappropriate enough. And so, this one may start off odd, but hang on with me for just a minute. So, if you've ever, some of you, has Dr. Ott ever asked any of y'all if you'd rather be a carrot, an egg, or a coffee bean? You heard? Oh, oh, good! Oh, yay! All right, so this is good. So, stick with me. Stick with me. So, would you rather be a carrot, an egg, or a coffee bean? And the rest of the story is, when you, each of these objects is put under the same condition, and they're put into boiling water, they all react differently. So, the carrot goes in strong and hard, it's unrelating, but then it, subjected to the boiling water, it gets softened and it becomes weak. The egg started out real fragile, but it went in and into the liquid, and once it boiled, it hardened on the inside. But the coffee beans are unique. After they are put through the boiling water, they change the water. So, when adversity knocks on your door, the question is, which one are you? Are you a carrot, an egg, or a coffee bean? And as I was thinking about you guys and recognizing you this month, that came to my mind as I was thinking about it, and because the job you do is not for the weak. Carrots can't stand to do the job that you do. And you guys, while you continue to lead your campus and move forward under this immense responsibility and a myriad of different things that are thrown your way and obstacles that pop up every day, you guys, you may have your carrot moments at some points and which is, and are temporarily weak, and you may even have a few egg encounters that get the best of us sometimes, but I am here to say overwhelmingly, you guys are the coffee bean. And you guys change everything around you by the way that you embrace challenges as opportunities. You model that for your staff. You take care of our students and our families, and we really can express our gratitude for you, but hopefully the gift now, hopefully this is going to make sense now. So, when you change the water around you and be the bean, your coffee mug is in your little bag over there, and we'll see if it actually works. But what it's supposed to do is, it changes, see, isn't that cool? It changes the cup around you, and so this is your reminder to be the coffee bean. And so, because you guys do that day in and day out, wish so much grace, with so much character, with so much determination, and we are so, so very grateful for you. So, thank you for hanging with me. I told you it would be a good one. But, but please, again, we can't thank you enough for all that you do every day for our students, our staff, and our families, but hopefully, this is just a small token to remind you how grateful we are for you. So, thank you.
I'm going to have to come up with a new story for next year's Administrative Leadership Retreat. And I would just make a comment, you know, behind every great school district, you'll find a lot of different things that vary from district to district. But one thing that you will find that's a common theme behind every great school district is a great group of principals. I mean, you will find, if you have a great school district, you know, you may or may not have great boards, you may or may not have great superintendent, you may or may not have great central office, but you will absolutely have great principals. That's a fact behind every great school district, and we can't tell you not how incredible it is.
So, you know, y'all are going to have to, we're going to make these kind of scoot in so we can take a picture. I know. It's your favorite part. I know.
Now, my idea was just to give you coffee beans.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And the only reason my friends are smiling over here is because I got extras for them, because there were two that were very sad when they came in and saw your gift, and so that's the only, yes, in fact, Kent would have taken one.
I saw that one with, wait a minute. What were you doing with those?
I was very impressed when I saw them.
We appreciate you.
You guys want to say anything about principals?
I would just say I don't think you could understand how impressive you are and how very lucky we are to be able to work with you. You are amazing. You make decisions, you do things that we don't even know happen, and you do it with grace and you do it with style, and you also do it while keeping your teachers happy.
I'm sure what she said, y'all remember. That's like ditto.
I would say thank you for what you do for our kids and our community, because that's where it really happens, and you all are a caring, genuine group of people that make a difference, and at the end of the day, that's why you're in this profession and in this part. Eric? Thank you all very much. I just want to thank you all for all of your support. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Enjoy your coffee, Kevin. That is awesome. There was my, I think there was a state of the arts, Magic Castle Hotel was issued. That was great. Yeah. And I'm already told that was the best for the public. Our next item is our ESC Region 12 Superintendent of the Year recognition, Dr. Drew Mayes and Dr. Tom Morse.
All right. Well, should I use the microphone or we pick real quick?
I think that's good.
I think you'll be able to hear me. I don't know. But, Mr. Posey, board, school district, community, it's an exciting privilege to be here this evening because in all the 30 years of this competition, more than 30 years, I don't know, Bobby, it's been going on a long time.
38.
Dr. Ott, I think he's counting. I think he's counting or anything, but Dr. Ott's the first guy to bring it back to Region 12 for us and bring it on to Temple, so we're so excited about it. One of the staff members and I were talking earlier this afternoon about just being excited about that, what a good thing it is for the district and, yeah, everybody, everybody gets the recognition, right? So, she said, you know, the thing about Dr. Ott is, the thing that we really love about so much is that he never asked anybody to do stuff that he wouldn't do himself. Oh, yeah, that's, that's him. You know, all through the, all through the pandemic, even now, frequently, almost every day, I get or hear or see some positive thing from Bobby Ott about what great things are going on in Temple ISD. So, Dr. Ott, thank you so much for your leadership, your creativity, your energy, all of that. None of it happens without, without the right leadership, and you're that guy. And for some reason, there are two of these plaques. I can't really explain any. I don't know. One can only assume that if one plaque is good, two is twice as good, right? I'll put the pretty one on top. There you go. Congratulations, my friend. Yeah, let's do some, some official looking photos.
You want to hold one of them?
Yeah, well, let's, yeah. Let's do that pretty, okay. That's like one guy catching a fish and everyone having the picture made with it. I can be that guy.
All right.
You good, Anna?
Yes, sir.
All right. And...
I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Well, okay, you can have it back.
Right now? Sure. Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. Y'all can, yes, absolutely, absolutely. They have a banner that they want to present. Uh huh.
This is one rough thing to do, man. Yeah, yeah. It certainly pays not to change your headshot. Well, I want to thank everyone. This whole superintendent thing is really a team sport. I've said it over and over again. You know, I've got a great team here, a great team out there, principals, teacher staff, community members, partners, and I think for me, through the whole interview process, we have to be thankful for what we've talked about. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done.
All right. And...
I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Well, okay, you can have it back.
Right now? Sure. Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. Y'all can, yes, absolutely, absolutely. They have a banner that they want to present. Uh huh.
This is one rough thing to do, man. Yeah, yeah. It certainly pays not to change your headshot. Well, I want to thank everyone. This whole superintendent thing is really a team sport. I've said it over and over again. You know, I've got a great team here, a great team out there, principals, teacher staff, community members, partners, and I think for me, through the whole interview process, we have to be thankful for what we've talked about. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We have to be thankful for what we've done. We're not finished yet. We have one more presentation. I'll call up Mr. Rod Hendry, President of the Temple Chamber.
I like the jacket, Rod.
You didn't get the memo about wearing it.
I'll be wearing it Friday.
That's Friday.
That is my Friday outfit, my blue condom.
Gail, you can come on too.
I got Gail Tiger with me. Gail is the Chairman of the Board of the Temple Chamber of Commerce and also the Chairman of Temple Futures, and we're here representing both organizations. And a couple weeks ago, when, when all of us became aware of what the state decided, something that we already were well aware of and didn't need to have the state tell us about our, our state superintendent. So, I got on the phone on Sunday morning and talked to this individual as well as the other members of the Board of Corrections, four Temple teachers, and they threw out an opportunity that we didn't have to have to give to the teachers. We're excited to present 17,000.
And, and Dr. Ott, this actually endows your scholarship with the other balance that is in it, so this year will be the first Bobby Ott Scholarship given.
So, I have to come up with criteria and all kinds of stuff. I've been trying to get this endowed. I've been putting, in fact, this award money.
Yes, that, we know, that's what makes it endowed. To the penny.
Glad to do it. Thank you, y'all. Bye. Please tell me that's all. That's it. No more surprises. There we go. No more planned surprises. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
I knew it.
Item five is executive hires. A consideration for approval of Director of Budget Compliance, Donna Amin. Dr. Ward.
Thank you. So, the interview committee consisting of Brandy Stanford, Brenda Holmes, and Ms. Regina Rochelle interviewed for the position of Director of Budget and Compliance on October 6, 2022, and selected Donna Alamon as the lone finalist for the position. Ms. Alamon graduated magna cum laude from Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, with a Bachelor of Business Administration and a major in Human Resources in December of 2019, and is currently working on a Master's in Business Administration with a major in Human Resources at TAMUCT. Ms. Alamon currently serves as the Payroll Supervisor in Temple ISD, a position she has held since September of 2008. Prior to that, Ms. Alamon served as an HR Payroll Specialist in Gerald ISD for three years and at Cedar Crest Foundation for six years as an accounts payable payroll manager. Ms. Alamon and her husband Greg have been married 24 years today, and together they have two daughters and one grandson. Desiree is 24 years old and is a 2016 Temple High School graduate and a 2019 graduate at TAMUCT, and she and her daughter actually graduated together with their bachelors. Alyssa is 16 years old and is currently a Temple High School student, and she will graduate in 2024. Ms. Alamon's grandson Jesse is at Kennedy Powell in the first grade. Ms. Alamon is excited to begin serving as the Director of Budget and Compliance where she can utilize her education and knowledge and skills. She has a passion for working in a capacity that benefits the students and families of Temple ISD, which was important to her. So, it is with great pleasure that the interview committee recommend Ms. Alamon to the Board of Trustees for approval for the position of Director of Budget and Compliance.
Thank you, Dr. Ward. Members, are there any questions? This does require approval by the board?
I move that we approve. Donna Alamon?
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Ms. Galwin. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the same sign. Aye is having. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Alamon cannot be here. She's at a Skyward training, but we will. How appropriate, but we will...
On her anniversary?
Yes, on her anniversary. Yes.
Yeah.
Great wedding present.
Yes.
So, she, we will introduce her to you in November at the board meeting in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item six is the Board Presence Report. A TASCASB Delegate Assembly Report. Mrs. Myers.
The 2022 Delegate Assembly was held on Saturday, September 24th, at the Grand Hyatt San Antonio with President Ted Beard presiding. We adopted credentials, rules, agenda, and 2021 minutes. Service awards were presented. Elections were held for three contested positions. Delegates next approved proposed advocacy agenda items including the following. Cornerstone Principle: Safe and secure schools that foster the physical, mental, and emotional well-being of students and staff. Advocacy Resolutions: To allow for educator certification waivers and a rehire, retire, rehire extension for substitutes in order to aid hardships from teacher shortages. An Accountability System in which TEA notifies districts of accountability standards no later than the beginning of the school year in which the standards are to be applied. Call upon the State Board of Education, the TEA, and its commissioner to collaborate with public education stakeholders when drafting legislation. To oppose adding initiatives that designate using foundation school program funding for mandated programs, thereby reducing local discretionary funding per pupil. A study to determine whether the current law which limits transportation funding to students living more than two miles from campus should be adjusted. Giving veto authority to the State Board of Education regarding charter expansions. A study to determine the true cost of educating all students, including the cost of complying with state mandates. Texas legislators spending recaptured dollars collected solely on education. There were 75 resolutions passed in total and can be found on the TASB website.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Myers. Any questions? All right. Item B is future items discussion. Anything we wish, I wish to hear at a future board meeting? Okay. Item C is important dates, and Dr. Ott. All right. If I can draw you...
All right. If I can draw your attention to the dates in the packet, tomorrow we actually have the homecoming parade at Temple High School. I think it starts at 6:30. I believe that's right. 6:30.
And Mr. Posey and Ms. Suarez are going to represent us in the parade tomorrow.
All right. Well, good. I hope you're in the very front. October 17, we have a visit from, a showcase visit, Amplify, from T E A. They're coming to Garcia and Jefferson. We actually had the Commissioner here, as you know, visiting Jefferson not too long ago. Where's Pam? Over there. And Pam, you did an extraordinary job. I got a text message from him saying that he wished his own kids were at that school. So I think that's the highest paid compliment you can receive. Well done. October 26, we have a Policy Committee Meeting, 27 Facilities. And November 10, we have a School Board Retreat, and that'll be the update from Student Services and Communications. The 11th, we have a holiday, it's Veterans Day. And then November 17, and please mark your schedule on this, we have Adrian Kennedy. And we also have Brian Daniel, who's the Chair of the Reinvestment Zone. Obviously, Adrian is the President of the Economic Development Corporation. And they're going to give us a windshield tour of the new businesses that are coming in the reinvestment zone. So definitely be prepared for that. Not just new businesses that are coming, but ones that have landed here recently. And then we have a School Board Retreat, December 1 at Temple High School, and that's actually going to be done in the CTE Department. Kent will go over an update on facilities. And then, per your request, when we did the Culture Tree, we will have some fun and do some pie baking with the culinary students. They will take us through, there will not be a taste test afterwards, but it'll be a team-building activity that we will do there, and it'll be student-led, and it'll give you kind of an idea of what our students do in that program as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item six is consent items, items A through G2. What is the pleasure of the board to hear the, and deal with these items?
I move that we approve the consent items 7A through G2 as one item.
All right. Motion by Ms. Galwin.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Ayes have it. Thank you. Item eight, action items. A, Human Resources. And Dr. Ward, no items tonight. Okay. Item B is academics, and Dr. Lisa Adams.
Well, good evening.
And I guess I'll read, you want to go ahead and read the items first?
Sure. How would you like to do, Mr. President?
Okay. Item one is the Campus Improvement Plans Presentation. And item two is consideration for approval of Lamar Middle School and Travis Science Academy Targeted Improvement Plan.
Thank you very much. So the reason the principals couldn't leave is because they need to stay while we brag on them. We want you to see all the fantastic things happening in their classrooms this year. And so I'm here tonight just to share the campus improvement plans. Every year, campuses look at their data, they do a needs assessment, and then they identify very specific targets that they plan to work on. So for our district targets. Christine's messing with me. Well, I can, I can do that, so that's good. I can, I can do the point. Okay, thank you. All right. So at the district level, the two areas we're focusing on is really increasing rigor in every classroom. We have a very strong initiative this year about really focusing on our Tier One instruction, making sure the first instruction students get is very rigorous, and we're pushing for them to be independent thinkers, right? And so just making sure that they can do all things independently, because we want to make sure every student reach grade, reaches grade level. And then, secondly, we're still focusing on those gaps that students had from the last couple of years, and so really targeting and closing the gaps for every learner. And these are the targets that we are focusing on at the district level, but that looks a little different at every campus, because every campus is in a different spot, has different needs or challenges with their data, and so we want to share what they're doing. So at Meredith Dunbar, and I think you just want to look at the pictures too, right? You don't want to hear, listen to me talk, you want to look at the pictures. So Meredith Dunbar is really focusing on really ensuring that our students master those hard-to-teach phonemic skills. And so you'll see that little one, she's poking at the M, but above it, you can see there's a sentence where the students are counting words. That's a pretty challenging skill. And so really focusing on those hard, hard skills like alliteration, onset rhyme, syllabication, all those things. And then they redesigned their math enrichment to focus on patterns. Patterns really is the foundation of math. And so you, so you see our two friends working together, because social, social skills is very important as well, right, Mrs., Ms. Murphy? Yes, but they're working together to create a pattern. And so those are the two areas that Meredith is working on. At Cater Elementary, they've been working hard to refine their vision, mission, and core values, because they want to focus on really high expectations where all students grow. And if you've never met Quinesha's husband, he is an amazing carpenter, and so they've created a Cater Golden Bell. So every time a student hits their goal, they get to come down to the front office and ring that bell, and that's very exciting. It's very exciting at Cater. They're also focusing on increasing their student engagement, and so you see students right there working on concrete representations of math. Math, remember, was an area that we're focusing on across the district, and so you see evidence of that as well. But I love that bell. So when you go to Cater, I think you just need to ring the bell. That'll be okay, right, Quinesha? She hasn't let me ring it yet. She hasn't let me ring it yet, but I'm excited. So at Hector P. Garcia, Ms. Christian actually is under the weather tonight. She was very sad not to be able to be here with you, but she's been focusing on really utilizing assessment strategies that require that independent thinking. So you'll see students right there working together to complete a task without their teachers' help. They're working there together to do that. You also see a kindergarten bilingual example of students saying what they know about the senses, and there was lots of things that they knew and didn't know, and then they went through some lessons, and then they were assessing now what they've learned. And they're utilizing, I saw teachers actually look at that data in PLCs and talk about what adjustments they needed to make to make sure that the students were able to master that concept of the five senses. Or los sentidos. Did I say it right?
Sentidos.
Sentidos. Thank you very much. I learn something new every time I go to Garcia. All right. Next slide, please. At Jefferson Elementary, they continue to work on their PLC processes. They're really focusing on that lesson study. That's part of what's made them so successful with the Amplify implementation. And so they're really focusing on those very specific skills. So you see our, our young friend right here, she's working on a very specific skill for math and showing multiple ways to, to represent that math problem. But above it, you see that, you see that whiteboard. That was actually teachers teaching each other the math concept. So they were showing each other the different ways that they could teach the students to understand that math concept. So we're seeing lots of teachers begin to focus on delivery and PLCs, and they're practice teaching with each other and talking to younger teachers, talking to veteran teachers about what's the best way to do that. And then Mrs. Goodness, my Mrs. Dimney, I'm so sorry. Like, when I get in front of people, I can't remember anybody's name, and this is just a bad thing about myself, I'm sorry. But she's really focusing on visual data, making sure that they're, that they're tracking every student's progress so that we can make sure we close those gaps. At Kennedy Powell, you know, Mrs. Owen was already here talking about the redesign to the STEM Academy, and you see our friends up there in that front top corner, making sure that we have STEM integration across the campus, and so they've already had one step day, have another one planned for this month. But the other thing I love is she's re-instituted morning meetings, and that's something that lots of campuses are doing, but really to support that social and emotional learning time, there's one of their teachers talking about being a good friend, focusing on restorative practices, and so they take time at the beginning of the day to reinforce those strong social, emotional skills, because that's an area that we're, that we're, we're developing and making sure that we have a strong skills in order to be good friends and to work together at school. At Ray Allen, okay, so can you guess who's in the eagle costume? I'll give you one guess. She's sitting in the room. So the principal loves to put on the Ray Allen. So Dr. Bloomquist, I mean, I, often I find her in the eagle costume when I go to Ray Allen, but students were, I'm, these are the things principals do that you have no idea that they do. They were studying the wingspan of birds and of an eagle, and so you see the students had drawn the wingspan, and then the eagle had to come and see if they were correct. But again, that's using those very high engaging strategies, instructional strategies to reinforce that concept. Students will never forget that, that the eagle came to see if they were correct on their, on their measurement. She's also focusing on developing and growing their leaders. And so there's a very, a first-year instructional coach leading a group of teacher leaders through a professional development as well. And so, and those are the things that they're working on at Ray Allen. At Scott Elementary, they're continuing to strengthen their Tier One instruction through their implementing our structured literacy pilot and really focusing on that concrete relationship and abstract thought with math. And so you'll see our teacher is dressed up like a Greek, because we're focusing on the Olympic code, I think is what it's called. But they were doing a study of Greek, Greek mythology in second grade. Yeah, in second grade, we're learning about Greek mythology. Isn't that amazing? And so kids were very excited about that. And then, again, focusing on ensuring that our highest learners, and we're making sure that all students are either being extended or remediated, you see an example of our teachers up there at Scott Elementary, teaching each other. So you have a teacher up there practice teaching, focusing on her delivery, and other teachers are giving them feedback. So our teachers are really taking great risk, I think. It's kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's a risk to get up in front of your peers and teach and things, but they're finding great benefit from it as they refine their craft in PLCs. At Thornton Elementary, they've redesigned their behavioral framework to really make sure they're focusing on those positive classroom cultures. They have morning meeting, but they call it setting the pace, because they are, they have a, a car race theme. You know, they're so cute. And so these are teachers working on creating that framework. You see an example of that. And then also they're focusing on building the capacity of their teacher leaders and in really making, making sure that they are identifying the misconceptions that students have and making sure their reteach plans are focused on that. At Western Hills, they are also doing some redefining of their vision, mission, and values to really focus on high expectations. So you see a group of teachers on the right that are focused on what does it look like to, when we, when we say kids are going to hit their maximum potential, what does that look like? What does that sound like? And they're really putting some definition to those, to those big ideas. And then really focusing on increasing their rigor, you see that every student there, we have, we have, we're, Mrs. Goodness, Tiffany's Vestal. I know, I can't do it. I'm so sorry. It's not them. I know what their names are, just not when I present. I'm going to get y'all signed. My name is Mrs. Vestal. I've, I've seen her in PLCs, and she's very focused on students doing things independently, right? Really making sure that if a student has mastered it, they can do it independently. And so we see students are really pushing that rigor in their classrooms. At Bonna Middle School, they're continuing to focus on that differentiated instruction and making sure they have that timely feedback. So you see a group of students in the hallway there, they're all, they're doing different things, having conversations, and the teacher's at the very end of that picture, and she's coaching and working with each student group. And then focusing on their data decision-making to make sure that students know what they know and what they don't know, why they may have missed it, and then having that reteach. And so there's a, a group of students, you can't see it, but on, we've actually implemented a new testing platform called Edge Elastic. Ms. Rogers brought that to the team, and Ms. Dr. Weiss piloted it last year as well. So kids can actually see in real time what they got correct, what they didn't, and make adjustments in the classroom. And so it's, this is the day and age where we want to know what we, we want to know it instantaneously, and so it allows students to do that. At Lamar Middle School, they've been focusing on the Lamar Four Cs. And so they have, they have redesigned their instructional framework to focus on building a culture of high expectations and then building their lesson design around the research-based idea of chunk, chew, check. And so that, at the back, that's a picture of the instructional framework that Ms. Bradford has designed. And then monitoring student progress. They work a lot in small groups, and so there's two friends right there getting tutoring in math, and I think Ms. Bradford was handing out roses that day, and so that, so the teacher was also getting a rose to thank him for his hard work. And then Travis Science Academy, they're continuing to really focus on action coaching to build the capacity of our teachers to ensure that our students, our teachers are designing instruction in a way that our students are doing the work. And so you see, at the bottom, you see one of our newest instructional coaches coaching teachers on how to deliver that lesson, and then really focusing on our math labs to make sure that we have those really strong instructional strategies. And so what I love about that picture at the top, that is a middle school math lab where every student is on task. That's amazing, isn't it? That's a good day. That's a good day in math. Every classroom looks like that at Travis Science Academy. And so we're excited about their progress there, but they're, they're working hard. I love it. At Fred Edwards Academy, we're continuing to increase college readiness. You remember the Edwards Elite? So, so Mrs. Mitchell's continuing to work on that, and she's really focusing on students being T S I A ready, so ensuring that they can pass that college entrance exam. And then targeting specifically her, her emergent bilingual population this year. So we've put some new interventions in place. So you see one of her staff members working with an emergent bilingual student, really making sure that they're prepared and getting those practice, linguistic practice for the Tellpass. And then Wheatley Alternative Education Center, they are continuing to focus on data trackers and student ownership. They don't just track academics, they also track behavior. And so these are two of our friends, they haven't quite earned their yellow shirts yet, but this is Mr. McBride focusing on their, their data trackers and they having those conferences once a week with their teachers, and so that's a great thing to see. And then finally, Temple High School, they're wanting to ensure that we have that culture of high expectation and student ownership. And so you see our two friends over there, they were turning pennies into what, Jason? What was that? Gold. Pennies into gold. They were, we're having alchemy and chemistry. So that was great, and they were super excited to share what they were doing in class that day. I think he texted us that picture, because it was so cute. Those are sophomores, right? Sophomores excited about chemistry. Isn't that great? And then they're also really focused on making sure that we strengthen that student-teacher relationship. And so this is a biology pull-out group. These are students that didn't pass Biology E O C the first time, and so they're getting special tutoring, getting pulled out in every corner of the high school where we can put them. We're making sure that they get a personal touch for tutoring and support. And so super excited about what's happening at high school. And so I'm just so very proud of all that these principals accomplish. I'm sorry, I didn't remember your names. Sorry, you can call me Dr. something else sometime. But they are doing an amazing job and really focusing on really targeting the areas of need so that their schools can be even more successful this year. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, but very proud of the work that they do every day.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Any questions, members? All right. Thanks. Thanks for that update. Thanks for the hard work all y'all are doing.
And so they just need to consider the approval for those two plans.
Right. Members, any questions about those plans? It does require approval?
Travis, I want to do it.
Yeah.
Move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers.
Excellent.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, you really can leave now.
No, no. It's later. Let's save this whole time, now, boy. That's not fair at all. I was just waiting for that.
Before the, before the principals leave, I, I also just want to express one more time how grateful we, we are to each and every one of you. One of the goals that we had this year, obviously, was to try to have a normal year at the beginning of the year, but you have taken that to a whole nother level. I know the last two years have been very choppy with the pandemic and, you know, whether you're starting the year with 40% of your kids remote, or whether you're starting the year with a new variant called Delta, whatever it is, the last two years, we've been mired in choppy starts, and you guys have really taken the opportunity, taken advantage of the opportunity to have a normal start this year, and have really taken it to a new level. So I'm grateful for each of you and really appreciate your leadership.
And are you sure you want to leave before Eric's policy review at the end of the meeting?
I mean, the party's just started. Cheers. Those, that's awesome.
Yeah. Item C.
You remember the day I walked into your office and saw that? I was easily distracted.
Yeah. Item C, Facilities and Operations. One, consideration for approval of purchase and sale contract between the City of Temple and the Temple Independent School District. Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. We bring to you
We bring to you all tonight two items. This is the first of the two that we've worked on for quite a while with the city. And the city is, as we've talked about many times, they're a really strong partner, and we're very appreciative of that. And so we bring to you two items. First of all, a purchase and sales contract. And so what you see before you, what you have in your packet tonight, is a contract that's between Temple ISD and the City of Temple. And effectively, it's for the sale of two tracts of land containing approximately 19 and a half acres. Tract one is Woodson Field. The appraised value of Woodson Field is $700,000. I'll say that we had an independent appraiser appraise both of these properties some time back, because it was important to us, and in fact, we're required to obtain at least fair market value. And so the appraisal outlined that, and Woodson Field being one tract is appraised at $700,000. Emerson, the Emerson Elementary property, of which only the old gymnasium is still standing, but that's tract two, that's actually about 15 acres of this total, and that's appraised at $300,000. So those are the two pieces that are outlined in this contract. Although we're recommending approval tonight, if you approve, the closing won't occur immediately. The closing stated in the contract shall be within 30 days after the date that Temple ISD would present documentation of an executed contract for the construction of joint-use facilities, which we'll detail in the next agenda item. Or by December 31st of 2023, whichever is later. So in other words, if you approve tonight, if the city approves their portion of this as well, we would still be in control of it and still own the property and still be able to operate the property there through December 31st of 2023 at the latest. Okay? So it's not going to happen immediately. And page five of the contract really details the reasons for this. For example, on Woodson Field, the city states in the contract, the city acknowledges that the district's construction of the new competition field slash track at the Travis location or for use by Travis, and a competition field also, which is planned for Lamar, they realize that these will not be available for district use until the city obtains title to Woodson Field. Either way, we know that when that time comes, they're going to own that before we will have two fields that we would be able to use for Travis and Lamar. Okay? So therefore, the city has agreed to allow Temple ISD to use Woodson Field, as we have for quite some time now, for its competition until the new facilities are ready for use. And that's very important to us, obviously, and the city's been very gracious in working through that. And so while it is important that we move forward with these contracts at this time, it's going to take some time until you see the culmination of that, and that's okay. That gives us time to continue to operate where we are and make plans and move forward. And the city's been very good to work with us on that. The other piece of property is Emerson. Right now, the only thing that we have there is the old, as I said, the old gymnasium. We use that for storage, and that's it. That's one of the few places the district has storage. That's one thing we're short on. So likewise, they said we would continue to be able to have full use of that location until that date as well, December 31st of 2023. The other side is, that means we'll continue to maintain it as well. So that's a large, mostly green space and mostly space that I think the city plans to develop at some point in time. I know that's what's in their master plan, but we'll hold on to that in the meantime. The contract outlines all of the other details and so forth, and I won't go through the rest of that unless you have any questions. But so we bring this tonight for your consideration. If you approve this, the city would then be approving their portion of this as the purchaser at a meeting soon to be held, and then we will move forward and we will keep you updated. Any questions on the sale piece of this?
Members, any questions? I know, before we vote, Mrs. Cook, you'll be abstaining from this vote?
So.
And, oh, that's right, Ms. Suarez, too. That's right. All right, members, this does require adoption.
I'll move that we approve the purchase and sale contract.
Motion by Mrs. Myers.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Like sign opposed, with a noted abstention of Mrs. Cook and Ms. Suarez. Okay? Thank you. Item two is consideration for approval of the interlocal agreement between the City of Temple and Temple Independent School District, joint use of Travis Science Academy, competition football field, soccer field, track.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Posey. This is the second piece of these effectively hand-in-hand agreements, and this piece has a lot of detail where we would be working through. And again, Dr. Ott and I, Ken Wolf, Steve Prentice, we've had several people on our side that have worked through this. The city has had several people on their side as well. And no doubt, this will be truly a joint-use project and truly beneficial to everyone involved. And at the end of the day, the community wins, the students win, and that's what we believe this represents, and we believe it's very fair, and again, truly a win-win situation for both parties. But what this interlocal agreement does is sets up very specific information and language for the joint-use area, which is effectively the Scott and White area across the street from Travis. Okay? And it goes into a lot of the detail of what that would look like. That's almost seven and a half acres that would be considered in this joint-use facilities arrangement. This entire footprint will include eventually a competition football field, soccer field, and track, drainage and utility improvements, playground and pedestrian improvements, tennis and basketball courts, and parking improvements on both City of Temple property and Temple ISD property. This agreement shall be for a period of 20 years, but shall be renewed automatically thereafter for one-year terms, up to a maximum of 75 years, and that's the maximum allowed by Texas Education Code 45.109, unless either party indicates an interest in non-renewing at some point in time. Obviously, right now, we've got a tremendous partnership, and we know we would be partnered for at least 20 years, but we fully expect that will continue long, long after that. If you approve this agreement tonight, along with consideration by the city council at a future meeting, this simply legally allows us to begin moving forward with design development of the project. KPA has been working on this in a conceptual manner for quite some time for the city, and we've had several conversations with them. And if this is approved tonight, and then pending city approval at their next meeting or whenever that meeting is, at that point, we can truly engage them to begin with real design development and starting to move forward toward exactly how that project's going to be done and who's going to do what and how timelines and that sort of thing. So obviously, we're anxious to get working on that. This, eventually, we would bring a GMP for your consideration that would actually be for the construction of the Temple ISD portion. And at that time, we would be prepared to detail, and we'll know what the costs are, and we'll be able to detail at that time exactly what we're paying for, and you'll know what that GMP is. And that's, so that's coming, but that's down the road. We have to get these steps in line before we can move to that next step. So again, there's a lot of detail in this contract. I won't go through it all. You can read all of that, but it's been thoroughly vetted. We've talked about it for a long time. We've thought through it. We've tried to anticipate any challenges or issues, because certainly, these contracts are, they live a long time, and the desire is that it'll be here long after many of us aren't. Well, I mean, I hope we're here, but maybe not here. But we would like to, we want to make sure that it's, that it's, you know, as leadership changes in the district and in the city, that a contract is still very workable, provides a very strong, solid framework for those that come after us. And we feel like that's the case, and we feel like that's what this represents, not only the delineation of duties with the construction of this, but the delineation of property rights and so forth and use later on. Do y'all have any questions on that? Or Dr. Ott, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, too?
All right, members, any questions? And again, the same abstentions, Mrs. Cook and Ms. Suarez.
She doesn't need to.
Oh. Just the first one?
You wouldn't have any essential.
Okay, that's right. Okay, that's right. You wouldn't have any essential. Okay. Just Ms. Suarez, okay? This does require a motion.
I motion that we approve the interlocal agreement.
Motion by Mrs. Cook.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Gallin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed with a like sign? Ayes have it. Thank you. And note the extension of Ms. Suarez in this vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. D is finance. Yep, nothing tonight. All right. E is student services. Nothing tonight either. F is the board committee reports. One, facilities committee update, and the meeting was held Thursday, September 29th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. Mr. Boyd provided updates on several projects and property items, to include an honorary bench to be located at Meredith Dunbar, bus wraps for the five recently purchased trip buses, the delivery installation of new lights at the baseball and softball fields, installation of a new fence at Wheatley, exterior door numbering at Temple High School to enhance security, closing on the purchase of the New Day Fellowship Church property, finalizing the acquisition of the Zeta Beta sorority property. The committee unanimously approved a request for the purchase of a new regular education route bus and wage rate recommendations for use on all bond construction projects. Committee members discussed a recent request by the St. James Masonic Lodge to dedicate a cornerstone at Sampson Howard Elementary School. The local lodge has supported district students in the past and has expressed a desire to continue to partner with the district to support students at the new campus. The administration will provide updates at future meetings to include an appropriate monetary contribution by the lodge towards the cost of the cornerstone. The committee provided direction for the development of honorary plaques to be installed at Sampson Howard. In addition, the committee discussed options for developing plaques for all other campuses currently named for individuals. Administration will keep committee members apprised of future developments of the plaques, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:14 p.m. F2 is the policy committee update. The meeting was held on Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. Mrs. Davis.
The meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. Several policies were reviewed and will be presented at tonight's meeting. There were no further other future items or information requests. The meeting was adjourned at 4:20 p.m. The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 26th, at 4:00 p.m.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Item B is board policy review. One, FFB legal, student welfare, crisis intervention. Two, FFB local, student welfare, crisis intervention. Three, FFBA legal, crisis intervention, trauma-informed care. Four, FFBA local, crisis intervention, trauma-informed care. Five, FFC legal, student welfare, student support services. Six, FFD legal, student welfare, student insurance. Seven, GKE legal, community relations, business, civic, and youth groups. And eight, GKE local, community relations, business, civic, and youth groups. Mr. Hagenberg.
Good evening. And good evening, Ms. Rogers, Dr. Genowitz, Mr. Wallen, and Sergeant Bennett. Our policies tonight start with FFB legal, crisis intervention, and this deals with the threat assessment teams. Right, remember from two legislatures ago, they put these into law, and so this is the policy that articulates those processes. There is, the team is district-wide, and there's also campus members on it. It goes through the Texas School Safety Center, and each member is required to have training, and reports of these activities are submitted to TEA every year. On the committee, there's members that have expertise in counseling, behavior management, mental health, special education, school administration, emergency management, and law enforcement. These teams, they conduct, have three main goals, three main duties. They conduct threat assessments, they provide guidance for students and school employees, and then they are also part of implementing the district's emergency operation plan. Part of these processes, the threat assessment team helps identify individuals whose behavior has raised concerns, and then they are part of the process that, and the team that conducts the individualized assessment. And the most important piece of that assessment is implementing the appropriate interventions and monitoring strategies for students that are identified as having concerns. The next policy, FFBA legal, this is our trauma-informed care policy. This trauma-informed care shows or addresses how grief and trauma are affected, affect students' learning and behavior, and our teachers and staff are trained on strategies that support academic success with those. All new teachers go through this training. It's part of the new teacher orientation. One full day is taken for our MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and that's our CHAMPs, our restorative practices, and the trauma-informed care, that's a third of it. And so our new teachers are given a full day of this MTSS. And then every year, the campuses have a half-day for student services, and so part of those three pieces is, with trauma-informed care being included in it, are part of their half-day in-service, so that our staff gets that training refresher every year before school starts. Next, FFC legal deals with our homeless processes. And as I go through these, you'll know, one of the themes of the, all of these things for the homeless, those students identified as homeless, are to remove barriers for our educational programs. So things like enrollment, as well as having referrals for healthcare, dental, mental health, those type things are given to those identified students when they enroll. Transportation, that is provided, and that's one of the first things that we work through is to, for transportation, to make sure the students are able to get to school. We also assist them with completion of applications for college, financial aid, and scholarships. There is a quicker process for the transfer of student records from other schools, in that we enroll students, even if we don't have the records yet, just based on what information we have. And so we get them in class, get them in school, and then when we get the records, if we need to adjust that, we do that after the fact. As another part of the educational program is UIL, and so those, the paperwork as far as residency are concerned, that is facilitated so that the students can participate in UIL also. The last part of this policy deals with community, school-community guidance centers. That is not something that we, as a district, have done, and that is a very formal relationship with a child welfare agency or a juvenile justice piece. with a child welfare agency or a juvenile justice piece. And so that last part of the policy deals with those guidance centers, which we do not participate in. FFD insurance, says the board may purchase insurance for interscholastic athletics and school-sponsored events, and that is something that we do, purchase that. The last policy, K or GKE legal, deals with civic groups and youth groups. First part is patriotic societies. So if you're a patriotic society listed in Title 36 of the U.S. Code, you are allowed to present to the, the student body. The, it is, schools are able to, in our local policy, make it a single day and make it a maximum of 10 minutes. For us at the high school, we invite them to the student center during lunch. So rather than the, the formal old-time assemblies that a lot of us had and went to when we were in school, this allows them to set up a table, all the lunches, so that they're able to go and ask questions and get the materials from those societies. So that's how we satisfy that part of the policy. Any questions?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Hagenberg? All right. Thank you very much.
And this, the next month will be update 119. That's the last update before the legislative session.
Okay. Wow. Well, it looks like we have a few survivors left. Renata, Beth, and John. Yeah, Renata. That's from a crowded room down to three now, so I guess you see the importance of this. With being no other business, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.